Good evening again. Welcome to the Township of Lacey, September 10, 2015, regular meeting. Adequate notice of this meeting has been given in accordance with the Open Public Media Act pursuant to public laws of 1975. Said notice was advertised in the Asbury Park Crest and the Beacon was posted on the bulletin board showing the time and the place of the meeting. We're going to begin with a solicit flag in a moment of silence.
I want to be listed to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, item number one, first reading of ordinance 2015-09, amending Chapter 159, Construction Codes, please.
In order to township Lacey County, Bush, State, and New Jersey, amending and supplementing Chapter 159 of the Township Code of the Township of Lacey entitled Construction Codes Uniforms so as to amend Section 159-4 entitled Adoption of Fee Schedules. We are adjusting our fee schedule in accordance with similar sized townships throughout the county and we are also creating the fees for a mechanical license.
Can I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Curtolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
And Mayor Quinn.
Yes, item number two, first reading of ordinance 2015-10, amending Chapter 134, Animals So As To Create A Section Related To The Tethering Of Dogs.
In order to township Lacey County, Bush, State, and New Jersey, amending and supplementing Chapter 134 of the Township Code of the Township of Lacey entitled Animals So As To Create Section 134-7.5 entitled Tethering Of Dogs.
Can I have a motion?
Motion. Second.
Mr. Kennis? I mean, Mr. Curtolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn.
Yes, item number three, second reading of ordinance 2015-08, authorizing various easements for Block 1837, Lot 8.05 for Lacey Family Apartments.
In order to township Lacey County, Bush, State, and New Jersey, accepting and authorizing execution of numerous easements and maintenance agreements for the storm water management basin affecting Block 1837, Lot 8.05 in Lacey Township. This is the parcel that is located off of Municipal Lane here. We call it the old nursing home site. We are entering into an agreement with Walters Development Group to create seven apartment units there and they need various easements for stormwater management.
Being the second reading, I'll open the floor. Mr. Lattell.
Good evening, Mayor Jim Lattell, Lacey Township. My questions are related to the apartment complex. I've had received a lot of calls, as you know, for the record, I'm running through office with Gary McCarreford's school board. And a lot of people are concerned about how this is going to have a negative impact on the school tax rate. Since you are going into a pilot program payment in lieu of taxes, I believe it's 6.8 percent to the municipality.
Municipality, correct.
Based on all the research that I could find for the demographics of the lower or affordable housing, whatever term you want to use, you're looking at between 1.8 to 2.3 children per household. So we're looking at roughly anywhere from 140 to potential 166 children coming into the school district once this facility is completed. And zero money coming in for tax dues. So is this, and I know it goes back to the COA programs and not war programs, which the state has mandated and those judicial activists have also mandated that the municipalities get stuck with. I'm trying to figure out the COA. Is the COA based on, I remember this conversation a few years ago, that they're looking at Lacey Township's total landmass, not Lacey Township's buildable, just property, and I've never gotten an answer on that.
Yeah, it is, COA, as you know, is set up in rounds and we've never been able to get a final determination as far as how many units Lacey Township is responsible for as far as the three rounds that have gone through COA. We are kind of moving forward this project because we're getting a lot of pressure at the state and federal level because of the fact that we've never really addressed COA units for anything other than senior housing. We have the COA units that are over in the Toll Brothers project, which are, you know, all senior age restricted units. So this project was something that we looked at very favorably because the outfit that's building it, Walters Homes, has done other projects down in Stafford Township, out by Costco, and they did some in Bornekit. They're set up as pilot programs and the revenue that comes in, as far as taxes, which is minimal, does go to the municipality versus the schools. The numbers that you're talking about, though, with students are considerably different, though. If you want to, you know, sit down and talk to the folks from Walters, I'd be happy to put you in touch with them. Based on the projects that they've built, they've had much less, you know, schoolchildren coming into, living these types of units. So I-
Like you said, it's Bornekit, people don't want to be there.
Well, even Stafford Township. Stafford's, you know, been the same situation.
And, well, again, I'm just looking at the national average with New Jersey's family units based on the census, based on social security, based on the-
Right.
-reports from various foundations. And I think, and again, I know you're back against the wall, you're being mandated by higher authorities, but New Jersey is supposed to be a state where local rule, governments rule, but we know that's not true. But we have to look at how it's going to have an impact unless the state in New Jersey can give us a clear thing. We've lost everything west of Parkway, whether it's Iron Barrens, Greenwood Forest, Double Trouble State Forest, the county buying up out in Banner Lake, they even bought up the individual residential lots that were available for future development out there. We're stuck with Forsythe, we're stuck with the surrounding properties of the power plant. They took out Island Beach State Park away from us back in the 30s. Lacey keeps losing. I mean, if you look at all our land and our bayfront, we're over 101 square miles. And if you put Island Beach State Park into the mix, it's over 120 square miles. But yet we're strangled in a small section in East of the Parkway, and yet we're being mandated to comply with COA. Now, when I was out in Mercer County in Hightstown dealing with COA situations there, there's got to be some clear definition of what our responsibility is as a municipality. Someone has to give us a clear, how many more of these units do we have to bring into town? I know-
We're working on that right now.
We changed the age restricted up on Warboulevard-
Right.
-to affordable housing there.
What we did was, there's a group of municipalities working together and we've signed on with the group so that we're not spending our own taxpayer dollars, you know, on our own lawsuit moving forward. It's a process that just started probably within the last three months. And the idea is to try and find out what the final rules are going to be when COA is all said and done.
And definitive number.
Which has been there many times.
Yeah, to tell another judge in a black robe decides.
It's going to change, yeah.
But the reason I'm bringing it out, because people have been asking me, Lacey, I said, this is the best explanation, but I says, in the opportunities, I'll ask, and at least people get to see right away, again, I try to explain, the municipality is mandated to comply with the affordable housing.
From what I remember having an explanation given to us, it also depends on the number of housing units you have in town and the number of commercial businesses and how many jobs they create as to how many units you need. So for every so many houses built, you need to have like one COA unit. And then same with, if you create eight jobs, you need to have one COA unit. So those are the impacts that come into play here as to how they come up with the calculation of your numbers.
But the property you're talking about would be the 80 plus, you know, miles of the property out on the other side of Parkway, which really don't come into play-
Yeah, I don't know if that's-
Because that's unbuildable, unusable land. The only thing that would have come into play would have been the 440 acres that was just sold to the county.
From structural management.
Yeah, that was structural management selling it basically to satisfy the mitigation issues that they had with the Miller Air Park. When they expanded Miller Air Park, they had to go out and buy, you know, it was like four to one in order to take and utilize the property that they were using.
Well, at least hopefully this clarifies to some of the people what the situation is, but this is not the end of it.
Yeah.
That I can tell.
No, it's, we've been, well, I've been here 12 years and I-
12 years.
And we find different-
I don't think we've seen anything.
Yeah, different number all the time.
Yes, sir, in the back. Just on this ordinance alone, it has to be, okay?
I just, I want to come up to speed with this.
Just your name and address, then.
Craig Wasdorfer, Richard. Because it's a state mandated program, whether there's 20 or 100 students, is there any state aid to that, to the board, to the students at all?
From, from, at all? No, no.
So they just lay it on the town?
They lay it on every municipality, yes, yeah. And every municipality has a certain number that they have to take and satisfy.
So it's within their, their structure that you can't collect taxes, school taxes?
No, when you're doing a pilot program, it's a totally different situation. The pilot program, they're coming in here and building these units and they're really not recouping their income, their dollars in profit until 30 years down the road. It's money that they're, you know, borrowing to take and build these units and have to wait all, you know, 30 years to-
I worked for a company that did senior housing back in the 70s that got extremely rich doing that.
Not, were they COA units?
No, they were senior housing.
Yeah, senior housing, you will get-
Same thing, no profit for 30 years. They were extremely rich people.
In order for them to get the funding that they're getting from the federal government under the Housing Mortgage, Housing Finance and Mortgage Association, they, it has to be done under the pilot program in lieu of taxes, or else they don't get their federal funding.
If you look at the project that's over in Toll Brothers, the apartment complex, as you go in there and go in and look at the rentals that they have there, and the rental, monthly rental cost is considerably lower-
I understand.
-than what it would be in the market rate. And they, you know, they have a lot of variables that come into play. They, they don't have the ability in that development to take and approve who they want to live in that building. That all goes through a state process.
So no state aid whatsoever for any student?
Nothing. Nope, nothing. There was somebody else, yeah?
Hi, folks.
Hey, just your name and address.
Nick Spauld, 25 Dunbar Drive. So, quick question, do you currently have a waiting list for COA?
COA units don't come through the township itself. We don't manage them. Matter of fact, once the project is up and running, getting, you know, to the point where they're going to open that up, we've been told that there's going to be a six week process, or six week timeframe, where people that were affected by Sandy re, you know, located because of Sandy, will have a preference if they have a Sandy-
Is that our township residents currently?
Ocean County, anywhere throughout this vicinity. But that'll be for the first six weeks. After that, the process is such where you go in there, you apply. Walters Home, the owner of the site, would really be responsible to put together a package, just like if you're going out and getting a mortgage on a house.
Right.
They package the whole thing up, it goes to the state, the state takes and goes the whole review.
But, so, you could inherit a waiting list from Tom's River?
Yes.
You can apply anywhere, yeah, yeah.
Anywhere in the state.
There could be 100 people on a waiting list in Tom's River. You build these apartments.
Well, no, we're not-
They're not going to get, they're not going to get them.
That's what I'm saying. Walters, they build them.
They could have everyone come down and apply here also.
Exactly. That's, I just wanted to clarify. So we could wind up pulling people from those areas.
Exactly. We don't, we don't know who's going to be approved. We do know there's a lot of folks in the area in town here that would really like to have the ability to apply, but we don't, we can't tell somebody, well, you're going to get, have an approval because you live in Lacey, because it's not the way the state works.
Right, okay.
We have, yeah. Anyone else?
Shane, no motion to close the floor.
Second.
One favor?
Aye.
Could I have a motion on the ordinance?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Curtolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn.
Yes. Item number four, Resolution 2015-222, authorizing an interlocal agreement with Board of Education for WLTS Channel 21 Project.
Resolution Township Lacey County, Bush, State, and New Jersey, authorizing the execution of interlocal services agreement with the Lacey Township Board of Education. We, Mr. Lidle and his students offer services to the township with regards to the filming of various township events, including these meetings here. And in lieu of that, to offset some of his salary, we give the school board $15,000. This is a five-year contract and it is up at the end of October.
Can I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Curtolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Tom Lidle said it. I voted no and he'll pay me.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn.
Tom, you're here for five more years.
Yeah.
Sorry, Mark.
Well, at least the camera is.
All that 15 is not to make.
I know it's not.
Item number five, Resolution 2015-223, authorizing interlocal services agreement with the County of Ocean for the DWIEP program.
Resolution Township Lacey County, Bush, State, and New Jersey, authorizing the execution of an interlocal service agreement with the County of Ocean for police services under the Driving While Intoxicated Enforcement Program. The county has various programs that they go out and you see a lot of it during the holiday seasons. And we share resources with our police officers to help each other out with drunk driving enforcement.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Curtolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn.
Yes. Item number six, Resolution 2015-224, authorizing interlocal service agreement with the County of Ocean for the DRECP program.
Resolution Township Lacey County, Bush, State, and New Jersey, authorizing execution of an interlocal services agreement with the County of Ocean for police services under the Drug Recognition Expert Call Out Program. And again, it's the same type of program. We have trained officers that, and other towns have trained officers that we share among ourselves. And there is an offset from the county's program that they do reimburse us $50 an hour.
Can I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Curtolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn.
Yes. Item number seven, Resolution 2015-225, authorizing the planning board to investigate designating properties as an area in need of redevelopment pursuant to the local redevelopment housing law. This is additional property adjacent to the nursing home site that we are asking the planning board to take a look at with regards to the area in need of redevelopment. It was part of the nursing home site and we are looking to expand the number of units that the Walters Development Group will be installing there. But first, we have to have it deemed as an area of need.
Move it.
Motion.
Second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Curtolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn.
Yes. You have to wait, yeah, public comments. Thanks, Nick. Item number eight, Resolution 2015-226, renewing a preliminary retail consumption license.
Resolution Township Lacey County, Bush, State, and New Jersey, renewing the preliminary retail consumption license in the Township of Lacey. This is for the site formerly known as the Sharkfin Inn. This is a pocket license status. It is being held by the receiver for the bankruptcy court, Mr. Gould. He has received permission since it's been in pocket for longer than two years to have it renewed. And once this is complete and approved by the ABC, we will be transferring that license to somebody who bought it at the bankruptcy proceedings.
Can I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Curtolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn.
Yes. Item number nine, Resolution 2015-227, authorizing the filing of a 2016 DOT grant application for East Lacey Road.
Resolution Township Lacey County, Bush, State, and New Jersey, authorizing the filing of an application for state aid to municipalities under the New Jersey Transportation Trust Fund Authority Act for the East Lacey Road Improvement Project. This is our priority number one project to re-mill, repave, restripe East Lacey Road. It's approximately .78ths of a mile. And the estimated cost that we're looking to hopefully get from the state is $397,000.
Can I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Curtolo?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn.
Yes. Item number 10, Resolution 2015-228, authorizing the filing of the 2016 DOT grant application for Lakeside Drive East.
Resolution Township Lacey County, Bush, State, and New Jersey, authorizing the filing of an application for state aid to municipalities under the New Jersey Transportation Trust Fund Authority Act for the Lakeside Drive East Road Improvement Project. This is priority number two project. We're allowed to submit up to two applications under the same grant. This will be Lakeside Drive East, which is the road that is just south of the Forkett River diner when you make a left. We're wishing to hopefully seek funds in the amount of $375,000.
Can I have a motion?
Move it.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Curtolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn.
Yes. Item number 11, Resolution 2015-229, authorizing a special item of revenue in the 2015 budget.
Resolution Township Lacey County, Bush, State, and New Jersey, providing for the insertion of a special item of revenue and appropriation in the 2015 municipal budget known as the Chapter 159 of the Township of Lacey pursuant to NJSA 48,4-87. This is a donation to the Emergency Management Fund from Exelon Generating Station, which is Oyster Creek, in the amount of $5,000.
Can I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Curtolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn.
Yes. Item number 12, Resolution 2015-230, authorizing a special item of revenue in the 2015 budget.
Resolution Township Lacey County, Bush, State, and New Jersey, providing for the insertion of a special item of revenue and appropriation in the 2015 municipal budget known as Chapter 159 of the Township of Lacey pursuant to NJSA 48,4-87. This is a federal grant program that we have been involved in for years. It's known as the Federal Bulletproof Vest Partnership Grant. We are being reimbursed for the buying of bulletproof vests for our police officers in the amount of $6,379.81, 88 cents, excuse me.
Move it. Second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Curtolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn.
Yes. Item number 13, Resolution 2015-231, placing a lien on Block 352, Lot 21 for property maintenance.
Oh my goodness, I don't have a, this is a question. I can't, you can grab that. No.
We'll be one second. We'll be 15 minutes.
I just want to tell you, I've been here 12 years. A mayor has never ever gone into executive session and given it time. We'll be back shortly. We'll see you in a little while.
I'm an optimist.
No, for the next one. Alright, so go ahead, we'll do it. Right, Resolution 231, it's Resolution Township Lacey County, Bush, State, and New Jersey, accepting the certification of the Director of Public Works concerning costs incurred in the removal of debris in cleaning up of the property located at 402 Hickory Lane and authorizing the placement of a lien against said property for said cost. The total amount of this cleanup was $465.87.
Can I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Curtolo?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
And I'm not ready for the next one yet. Let me just-
Deposit money?
Oh, yeah, you can do that one.
Item number 14, Resolution 2015-232, authorizing release of deposit monies.
Resolution Township Lacey County, Bush, State, and New Jersey, authorizing the refund of deposit child for the use of municipal facilities.
Can I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Curtolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
And Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
And then just one second for the next one. I don't have the final amounts. Here we go. Okay, ready.
Item number 15, Resolution 2015-233, authorizing the payment of township bills.
Resolution Township Lacey County, Bush, State, and New Jersey, authorizing the payment of township bills in the amount of $6,8065.43.
Can I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Curtolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn.
Yes. Item number 16, Monthly Reports.
For the month of August, the Municipal Clerk's Office Collector receives the amount of $4,693.55. For the month of August, the Department of Community Development collected receipts the amount of $105,961.60. For the month of July, the Tax Collector's Office Collector receives the amount of $6,97,755.93. For the month of August, the Department of Public Works, which includes road opening permits, in the amount of $38,368.50. Recycling commodities, the amount of $430. And truck parking, in the amount of $150. Motion to accept the reports is read.
Move it.
Second.
One favor.
Aye.
Item number 17, Most Approved Township Meeting Minutes of August 13, 2015.
Move it.
Second.
One favor?
Aye.
Item number 18, Most Approved Caucus Meeting Minutes of August 13, 2015.
Move it.
Second.
One favor?
Aye.
Item number 19, Most Approved Membership in the Forkett River Fire Company for Christopher Hinkston.
Move it.
Second.
One favor?
Aye.
Item number 20, Most Approved Rapid License Applications for the Lacey Township High School Booster Association, the Knights of Columbus Ladies' Auxori, and the Women's Club of Lacey.
Move it.
Second.
One favor?
Aye.
Add-ons?
Yes, I have one resolution to add on. It's Resolution 234. It's Resolution Township Lacey County, Bush, State, and New Jersey, authorizing execution of amendment to the contract with Espatata Construction Incorporated for the 2012 DOT grant application project, which is Lakeside Drive Road Improvement Project. This is a final change order. We are closing out the project and we'll be getting the remaining funds from the DOT. Between the, there was a reduction in the amount of $27,799. There was an increase in the amount of $36,129 for a total change order, which is an increase in the amount of $8,329.38.
Can I have a motion?
Second.
Third.
Got it.
Second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Curtolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
That's all I have to add on.
Okay, comments in the committee? Mr. Curtolo?
Yes, Mayor Quinn. I'd like to, you know, I'll get to the business in a couple of announcements, but appropriately, I'd like to begin with remembering friends and family acquaintances, especially in this part of the country, that were lost on 9/11. Tomorrow will be 9/11, where we were viciously attacked by essentially horrible people, cowards, that couldn't face us standing up face to face. So, in the shadows, we get attacked. I know we all have visceral memories of that day. We all remember where we were, myself included. And I'm sure there's Um, and I'm sure there's some people in this room that knew people that were lost, the firemen, citizens, residents in the towers. Uh, it's despicable. I know we'll never forget it, especially in New York, in New Jersey, in Pennsylvania, this part of the country. So, I just wanted to remember and recognize those residents and our neighbors, our best and our brightest, that were lost. So, that's what I have to say about that. On a brighter note, uh, and with regard to public health and prevention, uh, I would like to announce, especially to our residents here tonight and everyone within earshot of my voice, uh, the Ocean County Health Department, where I'm in the full-time employment, uh, will have a flu clinic, and it will be on Monday, October fifth, from ten AM to twelve noon at Saint Pius. Uh, this is going to be one of our most comprehensive clinics. I will be the clinic manager there that day, one of at least two. Uh, we'll offer osteoporosis screening, blood pressure cuffs, um, T-DAP vaccines, diphtheria, tetanus, pertussis, four, uh, different kinds of flu vaccines. It's a quadrivalent vaccine for protection against four different strains this year. But additionally, uh, what we have to offer this year is a mobile Dropbox application. So, we are asking our residents, our seniors, anybody that is a property owner in town, anybody, uh, bring your unused medications, not syringes, not liquids. Uh, and we, the... There will be a member of our police department there present at Saint Pius. I have a Dropbox there. We get those things in there. We get them off the street. It's public safety, and it's public health. So, it's essentially, uh, killing two birds with one stone. We hope to see people out there. We'll have people from the department to answer some questions. Bring your questions. Again, we'll have people there. Flu vaccines are twenty dollars, uh, but, uh, if, 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 uh, we have here flu... I'm just trying to read off of the, uh, the flyer right from my department. I apologize for that. If you're enrolled in Medicare Part B, or you have a managed care plan, the cost will be twenty dollars cash or check. Three different types of vaccines available, uh, and one, I believe, is intranasal for the people that don't like needles. So, we do hope to see you out there. It's a great public health outreach piece that we do. I'd also like to comment on the tethering ordinance tonight. I see two people out there, um, that have been really mercifulous in our community here to get this tethering ordinance done. We took into consideration, uh, some of the things that they said. I'm liaison to the Lacey Township Health Department here. I'm proud to serve in that capacity, and I thank the mayor for giving me that position. Uh, and so, what we have here is we, we essentially cherry picked all the great things about the, that particular ordinance with other towns. So, now, we have temperature minimums and maximums. It's real advocacy for pets. I know there are a lot of pet owners in this town. So, I want to say that we, we gave our word, we promised it, and it's going to be forthcoming. I just want to welcome all the students back to school. Uh, I hope that everyone has a great year. I know we have some veterans here. I'm on the Veterans Commission. We're going to be celebrating our Veterans Day and having that meeting towards the end of the month. So, with that, I'll end my comments, and I thank the folks for coming out tonight. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Peter. Mr. Giuliano?
Thank you, Mayor. Before I continue, before I start speaking on some of the things that I have that's going on out front here, you'll see all the things I'll be speaking about, in case you want to come up after the meeting to, uh, take a look at what we've done so far in town. Uh, the first thing, Township recently completed the installation of new exercise equipment within Hebrew Park. The equipment is located to the right as you enter the park. There are nine pieces of equipment focusing on a variety of different exercises. The equipment was provided through a grant opportunity minimizing the overall cost. Other park improvements included the surface rehabilitation of Gilly Park Basketball Court and the roller blade rink number two. The project involved multiple layers of acrylic coating, followed by new boundary lines creating a smooth and playing surface for the children, and/or adults. This year's paving project was recently completed involving the milling and paving and overlay of Cedar Drive in Laurel Harbor. Cedar Drive was completed end to end, along with the south end of Maple Road and Oak, and Oak Road. The contractor, Johnson and Baron, did an excellent job utilizing three pavers at one time to maximize production and quality. The majority of the project's funding was made possible by the two thousand and fourteen DOT grant opportunity. This past Labor Day weekend saw yet another successful Lacey soccer tournament. It has been a Lacey tradition for many years, playing host to over thousand soccer participants of various ages, both girls and boys. The Lacey Soccer Club should be congratulated for its hard work and dedication toward another successful event. American Youth Football League, formerly known as Pop Warner, began its season this past weekend. The league, which has been in existence since nineteen seventy-two, still has individuals involved with the league's functions. George and Janet Riley remain active with the league, resulting in over forty years of service. They're truly dedicated to the youth football movement. Future home games, so everybody's aware, which is, they're usually at, they're at Coon Park, will be September twenty-sixth, twenty-seventh, October tenth and eleventh, and October seventeenth and eighteenth. Last, on Saturday, September twenty-sixth, the Lacey Historical Society will be hosting its twenty-second annual apple festival, located in the Old Schoolhouse Museum and Forkett River Firehouse grounds. Many exciting events will be taking place between the hours of nine AM and three PM. As always, we hope for a good weather in order, in order to sample all of those apple pies submitted for the contest. I hope to see everyone there. Like I said, and all the things I just spoke about, everything's out here. You can take a look afterwards, and if you have any questions, uh, please ask, and I'll be more than happy to answer them for you. On the final note, personal note, you know, uh, some of the people up here, mainly Mr. Kennas there, asked me why I have an orange shirt on tonight. Well, I got a phone call today from my daughter. She goes to Caldwell University. Um, the staff and students up there were asked to wear orange to increase awareness of leukemia and lymphoma awareness, and that's what's going on up there, and that's why I wore this. So, I made sure my wife went out and got that today, so I can promote it for my daughter, which called me. That's all I have tonight, Mayor.
Thank you, Nick. Very nice. Steve?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just picking up on something that Committee Chairman Kuratolo, um, spoke on regarding nine eleven. I just came back from Orlando. I was there two days ago, and, uh, again, went through all the security, and, uh, at the Orlando Airport, they have a Ruby Tuesdays after security. And I never ate at an airport restaurant like that before. Ruby Tuesdays is casual dining. I'm sure everybody knows what Ruby Tuesdays is. And, um, I got in a chicken breast in a salad bar. They have excellent salad bar there. And I go back to my table to eat, and there was no silverware there, so I asked the waiter, "Do you have silverware?" And they hand me a plastic knife and fork. And I, it just dawned on me, like, nine eleven occurred fourteen years ago, and I, I have to sit there and eat with a plastic knife and fork, and it's so difficult, I said, mine are a concern, but it's so difficult trying to cut a chicken breast or salad with a plastic knife and fork, but I, it was just staggering. I started thinking about, like, twelve or sixteen people, however many it was, just changed the course of events for fourteen years later. I'm sitting in a restaurant, and I'm not allowed to eat with proper silverware. But it just dawned on me, like, the amount of money and time that's, that's been invested in, in the, you know, what's happened since nine eleven, staggering when you really think about it. Uh, I would like, uh, the five K race. I would like to thank Heather Scanlon and the rest of the, uh, members of the, uh, Lacey Municipal Alliance and all the sponsors that took part in the five K race that was held in August. It's a great event that showcased, that really showcases the best of Lacey Township. It's well-attended. The weather's great. It's a, it's a great event, and everybody should get out, get a chance to go to it every year. It's just a fabulous event. Recently, myself and Committee Chairman Giuliano met with, uh, Senator Connors and some residents along the north branch of the Forkett River, to try and see if we can get, um, Exelon to help participate in dredging and alleviating some of the, uh, the shallow lagoon areas along the north branch. It's a very long, difficult process, but we're, uh, trying to set up some meetings to try and alleviate some of those problems along that, uh, waterway. Um, and two notes, on this Friday, September eighteenth at three PM, is the ninetieth anniversary of the Ocean County Library. There's going to be family scavenger hunts, the crafts, and the birthday cake. And the following day, on September nineteenth, the Forkett River Presbyterian Church is having a fall festival with, um, activities for the kids, food, drinks, stuff like that. So, that's all I have, Mayor.
Thanks, Steve. Dykoff?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, as, as Mr. Kuratolo mentioned, back to school. Once you're going to be cognizant out there of, of the kids out in the streets now, be careful, pay attention to speed limits, and of course, kids running through the streets. On Tuesday, I attended at the high school, uh, Pepper Rally, and it was great to see all the sports organizations and extracurricular, uh, clubs out there. Lot of school spirit. Uh, it was kind of nice. Representatives of, of the student government gave out, um, a rally stick, or, or, uh, school spirit stick, it was called. And the girls volleyball team won the school spirit, and they definitely, definitely deserved it. They did a great job. Like I said, it was a great thing. If you can get out there and support those kids, um, during those pepper rallies, it'd be a great thing. Um, I also thought about nine eleven, and it's kind of funny. You think about remembering events in your life and what you were doing, where you were, and I remember exactly what I was doing. I remember exactly where I was. I remember getting the phone call from my wife because, fact that we didn't have cellphones and/or TVs, and I was at work, and her saying to me that a plane hit the, you know, one of the Twin Towers, and I immediately thought, ah, it must have been a small plane, you know, an accident, got lost or whatever. And while I was on the phone with her, she said, "Oh, my God, another plane just hit." I said, "It can't be. It's impossible." And then, I remember the whole day, um, one thing after another, the speculation of what it was and what was happening. It was, it was a horrible, horrible day, and as Mr. Kennas said, it's changed our lives forever. And the, the, the phrase, "Never forget," I'll never forget. I'm sure none of you will either. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thanks, Mark.
Just a couple of quick announcements. I, I received a request from Congressman McArthur to just make an announcement. For people that are still dealing with Sandy issues that live along waterfront, uh, there's going to be a, um, seminar. New Jersey Legal Services will be having a free clinic to help Sandy victims that are still in need of assistance in Ocean County. Um, the clinic is going to be held on Saturday, September twenty-sixth, from eleven AM to one PM at the Stafford Town, uh, Town Hall down at Mount of Hawkins. Um, if anybody needs help and they, they don't know where Stafford's Town Hall is or, you know, need help with anything, uh, please reach out to us, and we'll put you in touch with, uh, some representatives from Congressman McArthur's office and, and try and work at whatever we have to to try and help you along. There are still people, believe it or not, out there that are trying to still get, uh, the money that they were promised that has not come through yet, so, uh, for those folks, it's something well worth going out for. Steven talked about the, the Ocean County Library ninetieth anniversary coming up. Uh, if, if you're around next Friday, you know, really try and make an effort to go down there. The library throughout the Ocean County, uh, area is probably the best you'll find throughout the country. They, they offer so many different programs. Uh, they have such, you know, wonderful facilities, um, community projects, different things. They go to the community, uh, senior lunches every month. They put on programs. Uh, they, they're, you know, nice enough to host a, um, Meet the Mayor once a month. I go down there and meet with people that don't want to come sit in a public forum like this and, and speak. So, it's just a wonderful group of, uh, you know, men and women that work down there that really go as far as they can to try and help out the residents, and, uh, it'd be nice to, to show some support and have as many people as possible go down there next Friday and, uh, you know, celebrate their ninety, ninety years. It's amazing that, that went fast, and, and you were around.
No, I was not.
Uh, you know, just, just two other things. Touching on what, um, you know, Steven talked about, the five K race, um, that Municipal Alliance puts on. It's, it's really a, a great, you know, community event every year. It's a, it's an event that really raises a lot of money that's spent very, uh, in, you know, very good situations when it comes to drug and alcohol abuse that the Alliance works with. Uh, and I, I want to thank them, Heather Scanlon and all the Alliance members for what they did. Unfortunately, I was out of town with my wife, um, uh, for vacation that week. Otherwise, I would have been out there running with my two committee members here that, uh, you know, went out and ran the five K on behalf of the governing body. So, I want to extend thanks to, um, Steven and Peter, you know, for both, you know, signing up and getting out there and doing it. It takes a lot. Uh, I did it one year. I, I remember I had, um, been at the race, and anyone who knows Heather Scanlon, you know, she's kind of a, uh, person that kind of jokes around with you once in a while. Uh, I had shown up, and I, I think it was mayor that year, and she asked me if I would walk the race and come up in the back end so that I would make sure everybody was in before they started doing the choking and all. And I'm walking, and I'm, I'm following behind the last person in the race, and I hear over the microphone Heather talking to the crowd, saying, "And here comes the mayor finishing in last place." It, it was something I swore to Heather I would never participate in the race again, but, you know, these gentlemen are good enough to do it. So, you know, guys, thank you very much for your participation.
Thank you, Mayor.
Um, the only other thing, nine eleven, like everyone up here has said, it, it was a day that's certainly changed the way we live as Americans and, and something that, you know, we'll never have what we had prior to nine eleven. Um, it, it goes without saying, tomorrow is a very important day. Please remember the families, you know, friends, everybody that, that lost their lives. Uh, any thoughts and prayers tomorrow, because it's a, it's a very somber day. Um, if you're, you're new to town, you'll see tomorrow up and down Lacey Road and up and down Route Nine, there'll be flags flying, uh, along all the businesses in town. Our Rotary Club in town here has a program that they put the flags out. They sell flags to businesses certain number of days of the year, and they, they put them out Memorial Day, Veterans Day, nine eleven, just to show patriotism and, and for the town to be participating in that level. So, um, it's a great program. Veronica is a key component of that club, so I thank her, because I know she was involved when that program got started, and she's been pushing for, for all the years that it's been in existence, so. Uh, but remember all those, those, you know, poor souls and your thoughts and prayers tomorrow, so. Having said that, I will open-
Mr. Mayor, could I have one more comment?
Sure.
If I could? Thank you. Uh, I would just like to just add one addendum to my comments. Uh, for additional information on that clinic coming up at Saint Pius, seven three two three four one ninety-seven hundred, extension seven six oh four. Everything there except the vaccination will be free. You can talk to some of these professionals, blood pressure screening, stroke risk assessment, osteoporosis screening. Uh, and of course, again, we'll have the Dropbox as well. It's, again, it's October fifth, ten AM to twelve noon, Saint Pius. Thank you, Mayor.
Just, just one more item before I turn it over. Um, we, as everyone knows, we only had one meeting in July and August, and, and since our last meeting, we, we, um, unfortunately, uh, saw one of our former mayor, John Parker's wife, Ruth Bestelley. Um, you know, she passed away a couple of weeks ago, and, and, you know, I just want to recognize, you know, the fact that she passed away, and I ask everyone to please remember the Parker family. Any thoughts and prayers? John has, has served many, many years in this town and had a tremendous, uh, done a tremendous amount for the community, and Ruth and John grew up in town. Uh, you know, Ruth, they, they were high school sweethearts from what I, I was around those days, but from what I've been told, they were, you know, truly high school sweethearts that worked together just under sixty years. And, uh, she had a tremendous amount of participation in, in her lifetime for Lacey Township too, and it's another thing you should certainly keep in your thoughts and prayers. Casey is our public works, uh, director, and he's responsible for every one of those photos you see in front of us here for the work that's done in this town, so, uh, just remember the family during this very difficult time. Public comment, Mr. Moss.
Bill Moss, Biscayne Drive, Forkett River Beach. First question, Mr. Mayor, when is Meet the Mayor at the library?
It's the third Tuesday, uh, of the month, so it'll be coming up this coming Tuesday.
This coming Tuesday. Want to talk to the mayor personally?
Now, Bill's going to have me there for three hours with my door.
The employees will get overtime. President Obama by today, today, by President's, uh, executive order authorized that the United States tomorrow flags, all of their flags at half-mast. So, that is authorized by the President of the United States in his executive order.
That's great. We'll make sure it's done.
Have you noticed, uh, at the Lacey Township Schools, uh, the budget for tonight? I'm sorry, I'm getting a little ahead of myself. The bills for tonight are six, six million, eight thousand dollars and change. Uh, I'd like the people to remember that. Out of that six million, four million, two hundred and thirty-six thousand, two hundred and three are going to our school system. And now that I did mention the school system, I'd like to say to the council, thank you very much for the last meeting, for taking and putting the resolution to go on the ballot to have the election on, in April. I know it's a non-binding referendum, but the council shows that they care. I want the council to know, and people to know, if they go to, to the, uh, website and watch the, uh, school board meeting, they will find out that many of the residents got slapped in the face by the school board when they were, uh, Mrs. Regenna, Mrs. Dachenza decided to push a resolution to get the school board to try and change it, even if it would have been a non-binding if the school wanted to. They voted no, after standing up there and telling the people how much they thought it would be nice to have. They turned around and three of the older board members, two of which are not going to be there after, uh, January, still voted no after all of the people in the audience requested that they do something about it. That's, that's... Just to give you an idea, if you watch TV, you're going to see, you're going to see one, uh, one of the school board members say, uh, she didn't want to vote for it and abstained because of the amount. She was worried about the amount. The, uh, another board member, uh, was also worried about the amount and what effect it would have on their budget, and the other one did say he would be for it, but still voted no. But at the end of the meeting, the people noticed here, when you had an add-on, you did it before, the council, uh, did their comments. On the school board, the very last thing they did at the night was have an add-on, which I've been warned before about having exact, uh, figures when I talk, but the roughly twenty-seven thousand that it runs for a school board election really was an excuse, I think, and they gave another man a thirty thousand dollar raise to become a president at the end of their meeting. That's what I call is a slap in the face to all of the people that were in that audience, even though they congratulated them all for being there at first, the opening of the night. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Mr. Moss. Uh, Barry?
Barry Bender, Historic Bay Avenue. Uh, first of all, I'd like to thank Committee Chairman Kuratolo for helping push that through. It was wonderful to hear the first reading of that ordinance for the tethering law. Uh, it'll be nice to know that people won't be allowed to let their dogs sit out in the sun and have their brains baked in the summer or frozen in the winter, and I appreciate your-
Well, I thank you, Mr. Bender, but there's, there's five of us up here, Veronica and council, so.
Thanks to you all for that, that first reading. Looking forward to the second reading next meeting. Uh, another point, I just wanted to, like a PSA, public service address. Those of you out there or here, uh, if you did file Sandy claims, coming up real soon, uh, September fifteenth, if you have to want to refile, do anything with those claims, you have to get them in by September fifteenth. I know there's a movement going on trying to extend that date, but as of right now, that date has not been extended, so I just want everybody to be aware. If you want to do anything with re-filing your Sandy claims, you've got to get it in by September fifteenth. Thank you.
Thanks, Nick. Nick?
Nick Spaltrow, again, twenty-five Dunkberry Drive, folks. Um, just before we begin, can I have a show of hands of all of the Seabreeze residents that are here? So, I've somehow become the unofficial spokesperson for this group of people, so-
Congratulations.
And I prefaced, I prefaced that with, you know, you, you, I have a list of questions I prefaced that with, you know, I have a list of questions here, but I want to first echo this gentleman's concern. We're very disappointed at the school board, you know, we filled the room, we brought a lot of people there. We probably had over 70 or 80 people from Seabreeze present. And, you know, in spite of, you know, and we commend you folks for passing that impromptu resolution, you know, on the spot. That was great that you did that. But for them, you know, to not do that was really, come on. You know, we're all grown up here, and we need to send a strong message to them, or a stronger message to them. It's really, really important in light of what we've done, you know, in terms of, our group has reviewed some of the school board records. And we're fortunate to have a retired CFO who is a very, very, is an expert spreadsheet maven. And, you know, he's downloaded a lot of data into his spreadsheet. And we've gone over it, and we're gonna have the opportunity to sit down with the superintendent and the business administrator next week. We're going down there next week, and we're gonna really drill into some of these issues that we really like some answers to. And, you know, they've offered it to us and welcomed them, and we've got some, you know, questions that we would like answered as well. So, you know, that's, you know, but we were disappointed at their, you know, lack, their inaction and kind of copping out at the last minute. One other thing is with regard, as you know, the residents of Seabreeze did a mass property tax appeal to the county. We came in there with the county commissioner, I think it took two sessions for us to get through it all. And, you know, we're disappointed with the results of that. We still feel the community is over-assessed. And the reason why the community is over-assessed, and we've had this discussion before at the last meeting, is that, you know, everybody has a base price of the house, and then we go to the design center, we get all these options. So I had an interesting conversation informally with a Toll Brothers executive, who told me that in a lot of the communities that they build in, the assessor does not include design center options. And he was actually surprised, and he said, "Well, does the assessor in Lacy Township include design center options?" And I said, "Absolutely." He's whacking us for every, you know, moving a window, adding a window, landscaping, patio. And it's not fair. Clearly, we've shown resale data that homes have sold for the base price of the house. And I say the base price, Toll Brothers has a base price that includes like granite countertops. Well, if I go in and put a $5,000 upgraded countertop in, it's still a granite countertop at the end of the day, from a resale value, it doesn't, doesn't hold water. Okay? So we've got a lot of data now, and we're gonna come back and appeal again on the next round, but I think we'll have a lot more data to put it. But we need, we need some, you know, middle ground here, because we don't want to run up your legal bill, well, our legal bill, you know, as citizens, and go to court and, you know, and take this to tax court and start going on and on and on. So, I mean, we've got to come to some sort of middle ground, some understanding of what Toll Brothers does in other communities. And my understanding is that this executive did call Mr. Fitzpatrick, and he said to him that, "No, we don't assess for design center options," and that's just not true. We've got to come to a understanding.
Let me just bring you up to speed where we're at, Nick. Since the meeting in August, we have had a sit-down with Toll Brothers. Actually, Toll Brothers reached out to us, and they wanted to come in to take and reduce the assessment on the land value that they're paying over upcoming years, keeping in mind that they've already gone in and reduced it from regular tax assessment to a farm land assessment. And we, you know, by no means are we gonna take and give a developer that type of a benefit, you know, because it's just not, not something that the governing body is gonna allow, you know, to happen, or the tax assessment, based on the guidelines he falls under. But we did meet with three of the representatives from Toll Brother, which I thought was a very good meeting. Anthony Rocco was here, Charlie, who's I guess the super on the job, and there was a gentleman here, I forget his name, but he was the association, the head of the homeowners' association, Matt.
Matt Markovich? Yes, I think that was the name, a young man.
And Matt, coincidentally, has had a, I guess him and our tax assessor, Mark, had a relationship in the past at another community up in North Jersey somewhere. And the issue came up as to what they do up in North Jersey. They provide them a lot more, the tax assessor, a lot more information on an annual basis that they utilize to go by when it comes to exactly that, base price, base price versus assessments. You know, we agree, when you do landscaping and patios and stuff like that, it shouldn't come into play. There's no doubt about it. When you do upgraded kitchens and stuff inside your house, then it does, there is a variable.
Moving a window, making the doorway bigger.
But we have now Mark and this Matt working together, getting all this information into our computer base, so we have something to work with moving forward, as far as this is what your models are, this is what your base prices are, and we can take and adjust, you know, hopefully come to some sort of an agreement in the future and make these things work where it's gonna be a better situation assessment-wise for the entire community.
Well, we're happy to hear.
Yeah, Anthony, I've known Anthony since the project started out. I was here in the infancy stage when they were trying to get the approvals, but we just, the land value, we'll do what we can, we add our assessment on land value once a year, and October goes on. And, you know, we're trying to explain to them, you know, we can take and make an adjustment on it now, this October, based on the fact that, okay, you have utilities in the ground, you have no curb, you have no paving, you know, all those things can take and be held back until next year. So I think when they walked out, they were satisfied with what they were looking to accomplish. And at the same time, we are very satisfied to know that they're gonna be, you know, cooperating with us and providing us the information, which ultimately, in a roundabout way, comes back to the taxpayers, you know, to live in that development. So it was a good meeting. We also had a sit-down with Mr. Fitzpatrick and talking about his, you know, dealing with people, his people skills, and he, you know, he is, in my opinion, the last, last two or three weeks, he's been a natural gentleman and, you know, you have to understand, in his position, anybody that walks in his office is not coming in to bring him coffee or say hello. You know, they're usually upset about something. We've talked to him, we've, you know, tried to spin it the way we want it to spin, and I think it's gonna work out. We are very, very, you know, set on customer service in this township. That's what we've always tried to hang our hat on. We want somebody to walk into this town hall and be treated right, just like somebody to stay. You can have people standing in front of that microphone screaming at me all day, but I'll still show respect and, you know, maybe I don't agree with you, but I'm not, never gonna lose my temper and, you know, start screaming at you, so. But I think it was a good meeting.
You know, that's good. I mean, we need, you know, again, we're retired, most people are retired. We don't send any kids to school, we have zero impact on school. And I think, you know, as a group, as a community, we have a lot to offer.
Oh, sure.
You know, and we said this to the school board. I mean, we have retired professionals, executives, businessmen, businesswomen, they have a lot to offer. You know, we want to be part of the community, and we want to, we want to do our part.
Right.
All right, if I can, we have a list of questions, and I don't expect answers, but these are a list of questions. What we did was, Matt Boenbeski, he's got a very expensive spreadsheet, and will be happy to share it with you, it's really your data. So we collected all your data. And there's a lot of questions, there's about 16 questions on here, but I'll kind of select a few of them, but we're, I'm sorry, and I'm sorry, and Karsten put together some of these questions here, based on Matt's data, okay? So on the FEMA reimbursement, we have questions like, are we, you know, how do we get, how do we get other funds? How do we get additional funds from 2014? You know, delinquent taxes, there's 3.8 million on the balance sheet, you know, what percentage do you expect to collect, and, you know, what do we do about the difference? The, on the local taxes, there was a, why was, why is it $1.2 million decrease in taxes being budgeted, given the rate of, you know, property tax increase? Is the overall tax rate increased 12%?
Because you lost a half a billion dollars in assessed value overall when we did the reassessment, that's where that comes into play.
So the 1.2 million is in it all. Why are the attorney fees increasing? And, you know, and is the attorney considered an outside contractor, or is he an employee?
Yeah, attorney is an outside contractor.
Attorneys in plural, we have more than one attorney for various boards.
Are you talking just about tax appeal attorneys, or are there attorneys? Is there a number of attorneys?
I think there's a line item for attorney fees.
Okay, so it's a bunch of us.
Yeah, there's a group of attorneys, yeah, depending on the boards.
If you come to the January 1st meeting, we do our annual appointments every year on January 1st, and you'd see that there's a number of different attorneys represented in different capacities in the township itself.
And again, I'll be happy to, perhaps Veronica, we could email you these.
Yeah, that would be great, because between myself and Mrs. Cavella, we can definitely get you the answers that you're looking for.
Because we're looking at, you know, we don't, we don't know, there's a term in there, land use administration, we don't.
That's downstairs in planning and zoning.
Okay, we need to, we were looking to see what that means. EE health insurance, does this cover all employees, including the Board of Education?
Not the Board of Education, no, that's just the municipality. Yeah, anything in our budget just covers the municipality.
Yeah, we're completely separate.
And we're wondering what the percentage of, you know, what employees are covered, and does any outside contractors and attorneys and auditors?
No, it's only for full-time employees.
The reason I raised the question is because we noticed that the school board attorney was getting benefits, health benefits.
You have to take that up with them.
Yeah, yeah, you know, we're kind of like, well, you know, he's paying for it, but, you know, is he a contractor or an employee?
They're supposed to be a contractor, it depends on how the contracts are written. This is, this governing body and previous governing bodies have never allowed our professional services to have retainers or to have language in their contracts that would make them an employee to be in the pension system or to receive medical benefits. And this has gone back, I've been here 32 years, and we've never allowed it.
I'm glad you cleared it up, because we thought maybe this was a practice.
Now, the taxpayers.
Not a practice here.
Okay, all right, so this is a school board issue.
And that's something I don't think the taxpayers are really aware of it.
But, you know, not to go into, you know, and in the salary budget, we noticed that increased by 8%, which is more than.
Contractual obligations spread across.
Contractual obligation?
Yeah, we are under contract negotiations now, so to, not knowing where they're gonna fall out, we have six unions that are all up, and we are in the process of negotiating them, so we offset a potential of what it could be. It could be less than that, so that would all fall off into surplus if that's not used.
Well, there, and speaking of the surplus, there's 4.7 million in surplus, you know, why is this, why is our surplus?
It was reused in the budget, see, that's what you're anticipating, and then you reuse it in the following year's budget. So we usually take it down to about somewheres between $600,000 and $900,000, because we replenish it, and next year's budget will use, hopefully, what we anticipate, you know, to offset next year's.
Why isn't it used to reduce the budget?
It is every year, it is every year reduced. You can only use the prior year surplus in, you know, the upcoming budget.
Nick, if you want, you can, you know, give me a call tomorrow, we could set up an appointment, have Linda Cavella, I can have the tax collector, whoever you want to speak with, don't want to.
Maybe have other questions, like, you know, township employees driving, you know, township automobiles?
Only during work hours.
You know, and, you know, do they take them home, things like that? And who has access to the gas stations and?
Yeah, we'll be more than happy to sit down, you know, with the group of yous, you know, like we've done in the past, and we can get the budget out, and we can go over it all and look at it.
And we're wondering, like, you know, the auto repair facility or the mechanical shop, seems to be a sufficient, significant facility, you know, is that something that you guys want to outsource to try to save costs or?
We have in the past, and it's much more cost-effective to do it in-house, and of course, the timing, because unfortunately, with our emerged services vehicles, they are 24 hours. And you can't always get that service if you were to outsource them to, you know, a third-party agency, and stuff like that. So it is much more cost-effective to do it in-house.
And they're dedicated to?
I have.
Government vehicles, right?
Yes, yeah, government vehicles, and we do assist with the fire companies and the first aid squads at times. And we also will help out the school board or the LMUA as well.
And are there controls in place to prevent abuse?
Yeah, we haven't had any issues with abuse at all there, yeah, there definitely is. I think there's four mechanics, one, two, four mechanics back there, five, five mechanics back there. And one of them is solely dedicated to the police vehicles, and then they alter for the different types of vehicles.
So perhaps we can do like we're doing with the school board, and we could, you know, we could come in with Matt and, you know, and we could add, you know, so this way we can get an understanding and then convey that information to.
Yeah, that would be great, yeah, yeah, like you said, reach out to the mayor, and we'll be more happy to set something up.
We'll take you in the back and show you Public Works when you.
If you'd like to see Public Works in any fashion.
Yeah, if we can get some dates.
I have your email.
Yeah.
So I have a seminar in the morning all about the Affordable Care Act, and how that's going to impact the municipality, unfortunately, tomorrow on that, and I'll email you when I get back in the afternoon with some dates.
Okay. And there was a, there was a question, I'm sorry, just went back to this, this one line item here, the area of redevelopment, we're just curious about, so I'm not sure how far back the nursing home property goes, I know that's what you referred to as, but there's other vacant land that's adjacent to Seabreeze.
Correct.
Where there's a paper street that Newark Avenue continues, is that going to be included in that redevelopment?
No, that's all private land. The ordinance redevelopment land that we're talking about would be coming up Municipal Lane going to Lacy Road.
Behind Ocean First Bank.
Right behind the bank here. It was all part of the same site originally.
Okay, so that's this part.
Coming forward, yeah, yeah, yeah. The property you're talking about would all be in private hands, and we haven't seen anything on that.
One final question, there's a fast food place being built, not White Castle, but on Lacy Road, there was approval for a fast food?
There's an approval for Dunkin' Donuts on Lacy Road. The board of adjustment granted an approval.
By Lake Barnigan?
Yes.
Was it west of, yeah, west of Lake Barnigan?
Yeah, I think it's like one lot in.
So it's a Dunkin' Donuts, okay. When you said fast food, I was thinking.
Yeah, White Castles on Lacy, or on Route 9 and Dunkin's on.
I was hoping for a Starbucks spot. I hate going to the parkway for it.
Thank you, folks.
You're welcome.
Just your name and address. Gary, 18 Holbrook, Gary, 988. Just a quick digress here, back to the assessments again. More of a clarification, February kind of starts the reassessment appeal timeframe. Can we expect that we can start negotiations slash communications with you prior to us having, perhaps not having to appeal?
It's a 30-day period, we have to be, is it?
I think so, but I don't know.
They have to be in by April 1st.
Yeah.
They have to be filed by April 1st.
I don't know.
I guess my question is, are we going to be mandated to deliver 200 appeals here? Why can't we rectify this in a working relationship here? Because quite frankly, the data that was supplied to you on our last appeal, all the data there ostensibly represents the base prices of homes.
Right.
When you look at the fair market value that was determined when Cornerstone did that, and you look at the base prices of Toll, they're basically very close. And I'm suggesting that a lot of that data that you already have.
Unfortunately, as you know with the appeal process, though, I think there's the timeframe of the sale values for comparables.
Right.
Have to be within that timeframe, and I don't know, would they all qualify to be still in that same timeframe?
Well, we've got solid comparables now, because we've had closings the past couple of months this summer. So where before, you know, I think that was one of the problems we had with the tax assessor, it didn't matter, obviously, that homes were listed, and I get that, I understand the process. But even though they were under contract and out of attorney review, he refused kind of accept that, he went with new home sales.
Right. Now you've got resales.
Which as everyone, and Nick certainly has articulated it very well, they don't translate dollar for dollar. All I'm suggesting is, why don't we change the process a little bit? Instead of us filing 200 appeals, why don't we get together and work this out?
Yeah, let me check with the assessor, because it's all mandated guidelines that he has to operate within. If it's possible, then that's not a problem. But I just, you know, have to confirm it with him.
I mean, he may want to say, hey, I want my $25 times.
What goes to the county, the 25 does not come to us if we don't get a piece of it.
Then work with us here, okay? Because we want to make this simple for you and us.
Yeah, we might have to, we're gonna probably have to go to the county and ask the county if there's anything that can be done, I mean, the process.
Well, the county certainly wasn't our friend, so, you know, and that's a whole nother story, and if they want another 200 appeals, then oh, so be it.
Yeah.
You know, but I'm just, again, reiterating that all the data, all the necessary information, we can also, we can certainly augment it with the new closings that have just occurred this summer. And that's fine to do that. But I think what you were getting at, the way I received it, was you understand that there was a break somewhere in the logic here, and it needs to be rectified.
Correct, contract prices were just inflated based on.
Right, correct, it's just not fair.
Yeah, I'll talk to him, and I'll get back to you, so we can figure out, go ahead.
Thank you.
Back.
I'm glad to hear the Toll might have an opportunity to load their, uh, I can't hear last month, I gave you a sheet.
Your name and address.
Yeah, I honestly didn't expect an answer, so we're okay with that.
Your name and address.
We need your name and address.
Frank Losk, Opera General.
Thanks, man.
I have more homes, I'm not concerned, I am concerned, of course, with the taxes. One of the things that we've got beaten up on is land assessment. I said this last month, I don't know if I can get it today, we're all 120 to 150, $60,000, essentially the same size lot. Why there's such a disparity is no one, no one can answer. But every house I go to on the outside, I went to Center Avenue, I'm sorry.
Center Street.
Center Street, at the end of Center Street, all those newer homes, they're three, four years old.
Oh, the new section.
They compare with our properties, very, very similar, stick construction, every piece of property there is 33 or more percent larger than ours, every one. Every piece of property there is assessed at $74,000, except for a corner lot, which has 100 by 100, and that's assessed at 78. That 50,000 minimum difference between the standard 74s, the ones I gave you last month, they were all in that 74, 78,000 range. The mentality the assessor has, and how he came up with these numbers for the land value is, if you pull it all down, that's what's killing us. That's $2,000 a year in taxes, just in that, what I consider an over-evaluation. Is there, I know you won't give me an answer, is there a chance that you can get him in here or get a meeting with, because that's what I want to.
Oh, without a doubt, if you want to have a meeting, we'll set one up, that's not a problem at all. But we brought up the land value and discussed it at, you know, pretty great lengths with Mr. Rocco and the Toll Brothers.
Yeah, that's the biggest, it has no impact on us at all.
What they're going by is the fact that it's, the finished lot value comes in roughly for a basic lot of about 135,000. That was the number that, you know, came in at, based on all.
Who came in with that? Toll?
Toll, yeah, we were talking to Toll about it. And they wanted.
They say their lot is worth 135,000.
135,000, which they were looking to get reduced. But now, I know you and I talked about it at the last meeting, the fact that it's a gated community does come into play. I know you don't agree with me on that, but you got to realize, you have a gated community, you have amenities there.
I don't have a gated, I have a booth.
Okay.
No, no, no.
But that's clever.
It's private. No, it's not private. Private, how about we drive over there now, we can get in there?
Yeah.
get in it. Well, that's a myth. That's a myth. That's a toll sales myth. It is not a gated community. It is not a private community. We have rules that are totally ignored. We have a gate that doesn't exist. We have a little booth at the front. That's it. So that gated community is not true.
But that's toll.
That's so BS the toll tells people when it's not.
I understand that, but.
That's simple as that. But, no, it's not funny, it's true.
I know what you're saying.
It's true.
Yeah. There's, you're a hundred percent right, you can drive in. But the, the community itself has amenities that are in there, okay? Namely the clubhouse. The clubhouse has a, a value to it, whether, whether it's worth three million dollars, two million dollars, whatever that is. That value is set. We don't assess that clubhouse. There's no taxes on that clubhouse. The taxes are collected on your tax bill.
So instead of just, so instead of moving a, a number.
That's the way Toll Brothers.
You moved it over onto our property.
No, but that's the way these communities are set up because it's a homeowner's association that owns that thing. So you're paying your fair share as a homeowner in homeowners association. Just like if you owned a condo in Florida, you know, you'll get a bill every month for whatever the maintenance and, you know, the pool and everything else.
Let me ask you a question. I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah.
Let me ask you a question. Do you think it's worth fifty thousand dollars in assessment?
On, on the clubhouse?
Yeah, go ahead. No, no, no. On our quality of life, do you think that my property's worth fifty thousand dollars more than a, a brand new house four blocks away?
To live in that development? No, I don't think it's worth that. Yeah, I don't at all. But I, but Toll Brothers takes and establishes the way it's set up and we don't collect.
Excuse me, that number is eight point eight million.
For the clubhouse.
No, fifty thousand dollars time, the number of closed homes.
Ah, okay.
Eighty-eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars a night.
Yeah, well, I mean, let me tell you, because club, uh, Toll Brothers said to us, well, fine, if we can't take and, and build this out, we'll take and sell it off and we'll let, let somebody come in and build single family houses. I said, well, you go back and explain that to the association, that over the, the, you know, hundred and seventy-eight units, whatever you have, they're gonna split the cost of that clubhouse.
Fly by night development.
I said, they're gonna fly out of town.
Toll doesn't do that because it, it affects a thousand other communities.
No, that about it. Yeah, and, and they, you know, some of them are successful, some of them are not. But the clubhouse has a value to it. There's, there's a problem because that assessment has to be transferred over to the residents. If there was five hundred and sixty-eight units that were built in that development right now, that assessment on that, let's say it's a three million dollar clubhouse, that assessment would be reduced on a per unit basis because you're spreading it out. But I, I can't tell you what the clubhouse is worth. We don't assess that. You know, we assess the properties. But do I think it's worth fifty thousand dollars? No, I don't.
Times two hundred.
Yeah, I don't believe. Yeah, to me it's not worth that.
And that, I, when I say fifty, that's a minimum. I told you, it wants, it goes from one-twenty to, and if you can explain that, I'd like to hear too. It goes from one-twenty to one's fifty-five. It makes no sense whatsoever.
Yeah. Lot premiums are, are the same thing. I don't, I don't believe that you should be taxed on a lot premium. I mean, if, if, a lot's a lot.
It's not even a, it, no, no, I'm talking about in our original, the original street. Every house from the second.
They're all the same.
Every house from the second house in on the wooded side, it's all the same. If there's a hundred square feet difference, it's, it's.
Right, but if you go back.
And yet you have this disparity of assessment. That's what I, I, I talked about, is consistency.
Yeah.
There isn't.
Craig, just, just give us a call. We'll set up a meeting with you with the tax assessment. Are you on the same group? You can come with us.
Yeah.
We, we are assessed on a lot premiums. I mean, I just read that, oh, if the, if the clubhouse is eighteen thousand square foot.
Thank you, Greg.
And you do.
Love to step up. I gotta be able to hear you like.
So just, just for the record, the, the lot premiums are part of the assessed value. The clubhouse is eighteen thousand square feet, just based on a number for the clubhouse of two hundred dollars a square foot.
Right.
You know, that's twenty thousand dollars per closed home right now, not fifty. So, you know, that's another thing. And I realize there's a, we have a pro-rata share in the, in the, but there's not five hundred and sixty-eight homes there.
Well, that's the problem.
You know, there's, there's a hundred and, what is it?
Seventy-seven closed?
Yeah. And, you know, based, based on the projections they have, they're looking at another ten years. And that's, you know, that's not fair to the residents that are living there now.
That's correct. So that, so, you know, it just underscores why we need some relief here.
I understand. Thanks, Nick. Yes.
Ron Martin, Dunbury. I have a follow-up question on the low income housing. Did I understand correctly that you're seeking to build more than the original seventy?
Yes, possibly.
Another forty, probably.
Forty.
Just out of curiosity, is that a legal requirement to do that?
We are under legal requirements to provide, as Mr. Lattelli was saying, a certain number of affordable housing. And we have basically maxed out on our senior affordables. And, um, you know, Walters Development Group, you know, has looked at that property.
What's the number for?
We, we are still in litigation with the state because of the changes with the COA. We don't have a number and the state can't give us a number until we settle this litigation that we're in, in a group of a co-op with other municipalities to figure out what our hard number will be with housing for affordables.
Yeah, back in the second round, we were over three hundred units.
Yes.
We were getting five hundred.
Yeah.
Yeah, we were at five hundred at one point.
And you, you have to understand, we, we've also been pretty much told by, by, you know, the state that either we build it while we still have land available, or ultimately someday they'll come in and tell us to take our parks down and build it in our parks. The government's not gonna allow us to just take and kick the can down the road.
Five hundred is, is the maximum number that they're.
No, I, it won't say that that's the maximum. It changes, it's very fluid and they change it.
Yeah.
And the town has no say over who occupies those apartments?
No, the state has more of a say over it.
Or where they come from, or what their background. Do they do police checks?
Yes, they do. It's a very, yes, it's a very extensive check. And from what we've gathered and been told, that they can't have a record and, and then live in those, uh, those apartments over there.
We, we've, we've dealt with, uh, you know, Stafford Township and, and other, you know, Barnigot Township. And the best we've found is Walters Homes because they're, they're on top of the applicants that live in those projects twenty-four seven. And they don't put up with any, you know, issues. They don't, you know, they don't let the properties get destroyed. We want to have a project if it's gonna be in town, that, that the town is gonna be proud of and we're gonna be happy with it.
Well, that's one of the concerns that we have.
Yeah, that would be a problem.
This is a great community, Lacy Township and all of them. Which I don't understand, Bamber and Forkett River and Lacy. Someday we have to have a cup of coffee, you know, without.
There's a lot of people that don't understand that.
That one would help out a lot. But to bring in that many units and that many potential outsiders that would disrupt the demographics and the culture of the community would be a great concern.
Yeah.
So, but it's still on the fence.
Still, still going through the process, yeah.
The state still has to have final approval on it.
They have to have final approval and the funding's not there for it yet either. That's, you know, the final, uh, piece of the puzzle. They don't get, they tried to get the funding in the last round of funding and they were denied it. So, you know, this is all, you know, a dream until they, they get funded, so.
All right, thank you.
Nick?
Quick question on the COA. Quick question on the COA. Is it ten percent low income?
No, it's all over. It's low and moderate income.
Low and mod, but what's the distribution? We do moderate and low income. I thought it was ten percent.
Is it?
Is this four, fifteen?
I thought it was fifteen. I thought it was fifteen.
Okay.
Add to your questions.
Yeah, so, so fifty, so potentially fifteen percent moderate income would also create, um, other, uh, you know, entitlements for people. Potentially residents.
Yeah, based on your income.
If they're low income, it would, would put more of a burden in terms of entitlements.
Through the state, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Good question, yes.
We're gonna switch to geese. Come on up, Otto.
Okay.
Just your name and address, Otto.
Lakeside Drive in Worth. I have several questions I'd just like to ask. Are you going to lower the lake this winter?
Yes, we are. The applications went to the state, yes.
Is anything in the plans even, or any thought about what we're gonna do about the lake to try to save it and not let it become the mill pond, which I think it's pretty close to being. There are large floating grass all over the place. The geese are increasing instead of decreasing. And if we let it go, if you look at just the pictures in the, in the little Lacy booklet that comes with the newspaper, in the last three years what has happened. This year, the lake wasn't even mentioned then as part of the recreation here in the township. It seems to me that with all the money that was invested in that beach and the restroom that's there, and the road moved, and the new parking lot that we put in, we've gotten zero out of it. It really hurts me to see that. I live on that lake, so I look at that every day. And when we have a little outing on my deck in the back, and the kids are down, and people are down, it's a question I get over and over again. What happened to that lake? What happened to where we learned how to swim, where we grew up and had a great time? It, it just hurts me personally to see that happen. I just don't want to see another part of our lifestyle go down the tubes. And that seems to be what's going on. And I can see it isn't, mine is just a little part of it. I can see that the whole texture and the whole being of Lacy Township is gonna change with these regulations that we have to live with. Just as that dam that they put in up there, instead of helping the lake, has actually helped destroy it. Uh, it's kind of sad when I see grass hanging over the edge of it and everything else. I know it's very difficult for somebody to try to clean it off. My neighbor goes out there with a rake and works and cleans it off himself, where it's at his property because it actually begins to smell after a while. Now, this is a problem that's gonna keep one going. And I don't think it's gonna be a fast solution, but we've got to start thinking about some kind of a solution. Because this, we're working on it, which is what I've heard for many, many years, uh, doesn't seem to be doing anything. So, I think I've talked enough.
Yeah, let me just, a couple comments, Otto. Um, because it, this all goes back to, to exactly what you said, when the dam, we were mandated by the state and the Jersey D E P to build that dam index in place there. And, and I agree that I don't think the dam does the job that it's supposed to be doing, it's reducing the flow of water coming out. And we're getting a lot of vegetation buildup, which is why we've taken and moved forward again this year with draining the lake to try and kill off that vegetation. As much as I hate to see a miserably cold winter, that would be the best thing in the world for that lake if we did see that type of weather come, you know, January and February. So knowing that that is hopefully gonna do something there, we're now looking at what it's gonna cost us to try and put in some sort of drainage system along Lakeside Drive, uh, the perimeter of the lake itself. Because everything basically feeds from Lacy Road down those, those side streets and, and really just all the, you know, definitely dumps into the lake itself. Whatever, you know, people landscape with, whatever fertilization they put out, it's ultimately feeding into that lake and it's having a major impact on the lake. We know that. So we're, we're trying to, you know, get some sort of cost estimate moving forward, which I can tell you will not be a project that could be taken and done in one calendar year because of the magnitude of, there's so many different areas that we would have to pick up that water. And do similar to what we did in the middle lake, the county really funded that one for us so we didn't have to spend the taxpayer dollars. So that's something that we're working on currently trying to move forward with. The, it's funny because the, the issue with the geese, which, you know, is usually the, the topic we talk about, since the last meeting, I had somebody reach out to me that's another, you know, original, you know, individual that grew up in this town, that claims they have a way to take and deal with the geese. And Mr. Giuliano and myself are gonna be meeting with him. Uh, and I said, listen, if, if it entails anything with euthanization or shooting, don't call me because I'm not interested. You know, but if, if there's some way that we can, you know, do the right thing and get those geese out of that area, and, and if it worked there, it would work in other areas of town where we have similar problems, then it's worth investigating and trying to work with it. Um, this gentleman's been around a long time. His family's been here for generations. And I, I believe that, you know, he has something that could possibly help us out. So I, I hope to be able to sit down with him in the next two weeks and be able to, you know, come back with something on that, you know.
I sure hope so. Because I would like to see that lake be better again.
Yeah.
Be what, be what it was. It never can be what it was.
No, you're right. Yeah, yeah.
But to improve. You know, when you look back at that, we had that big fancy dam put in by engineers and everything else. And what we had before was built by local people here. I know the one that's still in use over on the south side, on the south side of the lake, Evans Wilber built that. I can remember when he worked on it. And these were not engineers, but their work was better than what this has done. The old dam that went across there was in there since I was a kid. And it kept the lake beautiful.
Yeah.
And now we got a dam that looks like a miniature Grand Cooley, and it's just destroying the lake that it's supposed to protect.
Yeah, yeah. Now, like I said, let me see what, what this gentleman's, you know, plan is, and hopefully I'll have something to be able to talk to you about.
Very good.
Thanks, Otto.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Barry? I'm sorry, Greg.
Still Barry Bender, Historic Bay Avenue. Uh, just a comment on the lake. Whatever you do with the geese, you know my feelings about the geese. I mean, any living creature deserves to live, as far as I'm concerned. Until the drainage problem coming from Lacy Road going down is corrected, you can kill as many geese as you want. It's not gonna fix the problem. Just my comment.
Well, we're not looking to kill geese, just so there's no misunderstanding.
No, I understand. But we're laughing about geese, they're living creatures, just like we're living creatures.
And that's, that's exactly.
They're on this planet the way we're on this planet. So, but until the drainage is fixed.
Yeah.
You're gonna have the same problem.
My, my comment was that, that if it entails shooting or euthanization, don't talk to me about it. We're not interested in killing any live human being, any kind of animal, anything living. That's not gonna happen.
Understood.
But the drainage is something that we've been talking about.
That's a problem. That's a problem. Thank you.
Thanks, please. Greg? Just your name and address, please.
Greg Panzil, Lacy Township. Uh, this redevelopment project that's happening over the, uh, nursing home, it's, uh, new apartments. Is there any, what would the taxpayer as far as that goes, or is there an estimated cost as far as?
I'm sorry, is there any, what?
Is there a tax burden or a, a, a cost as far as the project goes?
No, no, the, um, the project itself, um, we, when we originally bought the nursing home, we're gonna basically recoup all the money we laid out. At the end of the day, once we sell, we're still gonna retain a piece of commercial property on Lacy Road next to Ocean First Bank when all of this is completed. Um, the piece of property we're talking about right now, we're gonna be selling for a substantial amount of money, which will be money coming into the, the coffers of the taxpayer to pay down the rest of the bond. So at the end of the day, we'll recoup everything we laid out, but we'll get credit. If, if we build the seventy plus the forty, or they build the seventy plus forty units, based on the, the apartments, special needs units, you get a two to one ratio, we'll be able to take and probably satisfy somewhere in the area of a hundred and fifty to a hundred and seventy-five units, even though we're not building that many. So we're just trying to, you know, show some movement. Uh, because in all the years I've, I've been here, we've never built any lower moderate income, non-age restricted units. And like I said, the state is really at the point where they're coming down on towns. They're gonna take and force towns to do what they have to do. And if they, if the towns don't though, you're gonna be spending a lot of taxpayer money.
And how many people are we looking to take in as far as this?
Well, if, if the project gets funded and, and the approval comes through for the entire thing, you'd be talking about a hundred and ten units, uh, overall. Now, that's, that's split up between, you know, two and three bedroom, one, two and three bedroom units. Uh, that's up to the developer, how they, they set those numbers. So, but the, the numbers that, that we've seen from Stafford Township and Barnigot Township, a lot of those units are really utilized by young kids that decide they wanna stay in town, they get married, they can't afford, young people just can't afford to move out on their own and buy a house anymore. Most of them are moving back in with their parents. Uh, so you get a lot of that. And then, you know, they might have a child and ultimately be able to, you know, move into a house.
That's the optimal scenario. I mean, that's, that's what people like to see in there.
Well, that's it, yeah, but that's.
It's the cost of the coin, I get.
There's no doubt about it. But that's the, the, the way it's been laying out in the other developments we took and looked at with Walters Homes. Uh, we're only, we're only dealing with one developer. We, we took and really looked at a couple of them to begin with. But a couple of them, when we went out and looked at their projects, were not projects that were gonna be acceptable to the standards that we have in Lacy Township. And we, you know, we, we had different variables we had to, you know, make sure fell into our play. But again, it's, it's in the process of going through the approvals at the state level. And they, the ultimate thing is they have to get funding. And, you know, last time the funding was given out, it was, it was kind of unexpected. But most of the funding that you would have thought would have come to Ocean and Monmouth Counties based on Sandy victims, ended up going up into Hudson County, Mercer County, and different areas where there was a huge outcry.
All age restricted to them.
Yeah, yeah.
And you have no control over if our residents, the displaced Sandy survivors came.
They'll get preference in the first six weeks. They have to apply within the first six weeks of the, uh, application process itself. And as soon as we get that, that date when it would open up, we'll certainly make that well-known to the residents in Lacy Township so that they have that opportunity. There's still a lot of displaced residents that would certainly, you know, look to try and get into that, that type of a setting, so.
The, uh, tax assessor, I noticed that was brought up a couple times tonight. Consequently, he was, you know, during the tax appeals, I sat here and taxed where, right there where that lady is, and listened to people cry and heard, you know, basically poured their hearts out and, you know, basically begged for, um, basically just fairness. And he lacked compassion. Um, again, he was rude. And honestly, personally, I would have fired him on the spot. Um, was he reappointed by any chance?
The tax assessor is reappointed, uh, is it a full year appointment?
Yes.
Yeah, he's on a full year appointment right now.
Was he given a raise?
We haven't done raises.
We haven't done any raises this year, yeah, yeah, we haven't addressed any of that stuff yet.
Unfortunately, let, let me just bring that up, there's a statute on the books that the clerk, the CFO, the tax assessor. And the collector, if one of them gets a raise, the other ones have to get an equal to raise.
Yeah.
Percentage.
Percentage wise, yes.
Okay, so you give him a raise.
Yes, yeah, just so you know that, so.
Yeah, thank you, I appreciate it.
Yeah.
And unfortunately, you know, the rudeness was something that should have never occurred, we have addressed it. Yeah, but we, we didn't have, we can't fire him on the spot, he's, he's outside the realm of.
What'd you reappoint him?
We reappointed him before all this took, took and occurred, yeah, yeah, that was, that was prior to, because as you know, we had a former tax assessor.
You can tell him that until.
That's, that's been gone now, you know, he's gone to Monmouth County somewhere, so.
Okay, thank you, I'll be back.
Thanks, Greg. Nick?
I, I have one, Mr. Mayor, one question just came to mind with regard to the COA units. Is there a group home planned in that?
No.
No.
No group homes.
No, they're all individual.
There are five units that are disability.
Yeah.
For the disabled, five units they have to provide for people with special needs and disabilities, there's special uni, they're, yeah, they're single units, there's not a group home.
But no group home like community option matters?
No, no.
No, no.
Good, good, good.
If you drove into the project, it looks like a townhouse project and they, they are gonna have amenities available, um, there's, there's basketball courts.
Just like we see by Wosko.
Exactly, same thing, except, the only thing is that they're not gonna have as much recreational amenities on the site because of the fact that we have Gilly Park so close. So they are gonna be putting sidewalks in from the site itself, down, you know, through the back, across to the park.
And they're, they're doing it all along Calvin Street to connect up to the sidewalks that are on Newark.
Where, where your development is.
So we could.
Yes, you'll have a sidewalk that will, you guys, now you're using the dirt road, most of yous that are walking, but there'll be sidewalks there and that will be improved, that whole road will be paved.
Yeah, they were also giving us a hundred thousand dollars to put lights on the walking path to Gilly Park so we can utilize that, the solar panels more through the course of the year, so.
Okay.
Yeah, thanks, thanks, Nick. Anyone else?
See, now motion to close the floor?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to adjourn?
Move it.
Uh, second.
All in favor? Thanks, folks.
They went silent, they don't want to leave.